Oh, I got to record.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. With the time being four thirty two P M on Thursday, December twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. Uh, just want to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the district website. The first item on the agenda is the discussion of the superintendent search process. And joining us once again this evening is Tracy Nowick from Massachusetts Association of School Committees, M A S C. Good evening, Tracy.
Good evening and happy holidays and you know, we're all putting keeping this work going in between other responsibilities. It's good to be with you. Um, so in terms of the search process, your um position description has been posted on the website. And uh, as if to to prove me wrong, I know I haven't checked to see exactly how many applications have come in already. Um, obviously, it's very, very early, um, but I know that there actually already have been a couple. Um, so you're in good stead in terms of that. Um, in and just again to remind the school committee, but also the community, this is the part of the superintendent search that feels a little bit quiet to most people because um, effectively what's happening for the most part is that the position is posted. And the applications are coming in, um, and it will feel much more active again. Once all the applications are in and we start to move into the search committee actually doing the review. Now, I remember correctly that that's actually your second item on the agenda, so I shouldn't just sort of jump to talking about that.
Sorry, can you say that last part again?
In terms of the search committee, do you should I start segue straight into that or am I remembering that that's actually its own item?
Um, that is its own item. I don't know if there's any any further discussion regarding the superintendent superintendent search process. Any discussion from the committee?
No, no.
Mr. Adamopolis, did you did I see you? I don't want to call you in if not. Oh. Technical difficulties.
Oh, he's in the waiting room again.
I have an audio.
You're muted.
Sorry, my computer just went blank. There's gonna be an echo now. Um, sorry. Uh, my only question is, I guess, I I with the dialogue we're talking about, are we deciding what the committee is gonna look like, how we're moving forward now, or is that later on the meeting?
Well, right now, I think we were, and I know your your computer went blank. Well, first, we're discussing the superintendent search process, which is really Tracy gave us an update that the position is posted. We've had a couple of applicants already. Um, and the next item on the agenda will be the uh, the approval of the composition of the superintendent search committee members, which isn't a discussion about actual individual members, but more so the composition, who who will make up that search committee?
And if I may, Madam Chair, one of my things that I, one of my goals is always for you all to make sure that you feel like you understand where you're at in the process, that you're grounded in terms of like what has happened so far, what's happening next. Um, and so um, to whatever degree you have questions about any of that, this is it. This is a good opportunity for that.
My only through the chair, my only question is, it might be just premature. We are right now is once these applications do come in and they're going to get presented to a search committee. Is the search committee at that point going to review them and rank them and decide the interview process? Are they being provided a ranked list of the applicants by your office? How is that ultimately going to be handled?
Um, so in terms of um, so what happens, the complete the confidential applications come in. Once all of them are in, the search committee gets them electronically. Um, generally, what I do is I um, I generally I don't rank them. They get they do get all of the applications. Um, sometimes we are asked to rank them by the search committee, but generally speaking, that's only if we have a school committee that is having to do a particularly accelerated search. Um, very, for example, we have had circumstances in which a school committee has effectively proceeded straight past having a search committee straight to just having people come to the school committee. Um, in which case we might rank effectively the finalists for the school committee without actually having gone to the search. What I will give them is they will have a rubric um, that will have the um, the position description that you passed that is actually in the um, the brochure so that they can make sure that so that they effectively can grade each of the applications in terms of how much they feel it adheres to what you as the school committee have put forward as what you're looking for in the superintendent. So that is something that they will have.
Perfect, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee related to the search process? One item I think I just want to bring up, and I've just been reflecting on this over the last couple of days. I know our brochure says a start date in March or as soon as possible. Um, and I wonder if we want to say something a little bit more outward that we're willing to work with somebody who's able to start as early as March? Or July first, so that someone doesn't feel like it needs to be somewhere before July first, right?
Yep, so um, you know, that actually is partly why we phrase it. We had a back and forth even within the office about that, right, of um, are we going to be effectively cutting people off if they if they can't start right away on March first or that kind of thing? Um, and that is why we added the as soon as possible. Um, my intent was, once we got to the other side of the holiday, um, in our sort of pushing things out effectively, we we do have um, when we're communicating, for example, on LinkedIn, um, when we're communicating through our um, the email blast that we do, we sometimes do give a little bit more text to um, to the not to the brochure, but to the position posting. Um, and my intent was actually to 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 do that kind of couching, exactly. Um, because I do think that one of the flexibility of the committee in terms of its willingness to um, to work with the right candidate to make sure that, you know, effectively that you're you're starting off the year um, solid, even if you need need to do something in more of an interim fashion for the rest of the school year is is important.
Okay, great.
I'm glad you raised that because I think I think that um, I think the committee sort of starting to think that way is not a bad idea because we it could be that you'll have exactly the right person who's ready to go in March. Um, it could be that you'll have exactly the right person, but they can't start until later. I think that's a really healthy perspective for the school committee to have right now.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure that if there's any other questions or comments, they're they're raised before we move on to the next agenda items or anything else. Okay, hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the composition of the superintendent search committee members. Um, Tracy, can you um, can you kick us off here?
Sure. So um, as you remember from your initial conversation with Glenn and I, um, the the composition of the search committee is is first of all, under the purview of the school committee, just like every other aspect of the searches. Um, the first decision that you will need to make is whether or not there'll be um, members, a member or members, a non quorum of the school committee um, on the the search committee. Um, and to that effectively, it's um, as you, Madam Chair, said, to today's meeting is really about sorting out um, who has the other chairs at the table um, in terms of who those chairs represent, not names this evening. Um, and then I would say your final decision is then um, how each of those chairs is going to be filled. Um, so, you know, there's some common themes, um, some common sort of recommendations I would make that I think probably everyone here would would find um, pretty natural to have at the table, um, at least when central administrator have a principal. Um, you want to, I I'm highly recommending um, a student representative. Um, a cut at least a couple of teachers, um, frequently schools will have, a school committees will choose to have a teacher from each of the buildings, um, assuming that's not overwhelming, which will work well with in your case. Um, the one of the conversations to have is whether or not you want to have a specific set aside chair for potentially a non-teaching staff member. Um, parents, and again, that's a conversation of, um, you know, you can you can easily designate a chair for each um, school if you wish. Um, and then uh, the and then the conversation that you may want to have about representation from outside the school committee, the school community, excuse me. Um, do you want to have someone who is a community member in general? Um, and also whether you in your partnership with the town want to have representation from the select board, or sometimes um, the school committee will choose to have a town administrator.
Right.
So my first suggestion would be um, you deciding first of all, whether or not you want to have members of the school committee on it. Um, it then will be up to you all to determine, and you don't have to do this tonight, but for you all to determine who those are.
Um, what it so I, you know, looking back historically, our last superintendent search, I actually participated as a community member and parent. Um, and we did have two school committee members that were a part of that committee, and the rest of the representation actually really aligns pretty well with what you've described. With regard to uh, there were three teachers. I don't think there was representation from every building, which is which is a good um, best practice if we're able to get interest from each building that that we ought to pursue that. Um, what's what are the thoughts from the rest of the committee with regard to school committee involvement? Personally, I view this as one of the most important roles of the school committee. Uh, but I'm I'm very interested in what others think about that.
Through the chair. Um, I I agree. I do think that this is going to be one of the most important decisions that we're going to make as a whole. Having um, at least two people being able to participate during the entire search, I think is very important. Um, because ultimately, at the end of the day, as the community, we're as as a committee of representing the community, we should be able to um, give our input to this larger search committee um, and have our input heard there, but also be able to take any input from the other individuals while we decide um, to put forth, you know, three or five final interviews for the whole community as a whole. Um, I also do think that it is important to have maybe someone from the select board on there. Um, I'm not sure if we have anything inside any sort of charter for the school committee that dictates what we need to have on this, but having an elected person from the select board on here rather than the town administrator make may make more sense, especially since our town administrator is so new to the job.
Agreed.
Through through the chair, um, I would also agree that I I think um, two school committee members is you know, they should be that we should be um, on the search committee to um, to Mr. Adamopolis's point, do we have or will we have dates and times of the meetings going forward so that when we do put this out there, right, that that we make sure that um, you know, that that we have, we're giving people the visibility, right, that want to be a part of the committee? Um, so they can plan and and things like that. I don't know if that's a question for Tracy or 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 um, for you.
Tracy, I'll let you I I'll let you fill this. I don't want to jump in on you unless you want me to take it.
No, I mean, so we we've had this conversation. This you have you have gone exactly where where I always hope committees do, which is um, the the most important quality, um, and it obviously just I'm saying this from an organizational perspective. Um, for people in the search committees, they actually can make all the meetings. Um, and so, yes, we do actually have the date set. The one thing we're still working a little bit on is exactly when the orientation is. Although I should mention that um, we can have a little bit of flexibility with people um, making or not making the orientation. I can if I need to individually orient people, um, not all of them, but um, if we have a couple who can't maybe make the the orientation meeting, we can make that work. Um, but yes, in terms of the search committee, um, they are going to, the the meetings they absolutely have to be at. Um, I'll just say them now, but we have the circulating and writing too. Um, they will have to be there on on January thirtieth, which is when the search committee will actually meet to select the semifinalists and to set the questions, and then they'll need to be available um, for the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of the week of February sixth. Um, because that's when we'll be doing the semifinalist interviews. Um, I have it the sixth to the tenth. Usually, we can do it within the four days, though, and and don't need the Friday. Um, so the the one thing that we're still flexing on a little bit is exactly when the orientation is because we want to make sure that we avoid any um, obvious conflicts with um, the uh, other things that are going on in the district. Um, and also, there's a couple of of evenings that I already have booked because uh, one of my other searches is moving into finalist interviews that week.
Through the chair. Um, I think that's it's important for us to figure out what this actual composition is going to look like mainly because we don't want a committee that's too large, correct? Because that's going to be very, very difficult to make everyone attend. It's also going to make the process very, very tedious. Um, let's just assume that we're going with two slot, two school committee members and a select, then that's three members. Um, what's normally the balance between if we're looking at someone from each school, that's an additional three individuals? Um, whether we're going to have another one or two principals, or if those are going to count as individuals from the schools, and then I'm assuming at least one individual from central admin corrects, uh, and that doesn't include a student repers. Um, community members, are we looking at something around thirteen or less or even smaller than that? I would assume that.
So I would say you're hitting about fourteen, which I wouldn't want to go a lot far, a lot bigger than that. Um, but I think that um, I have worked with and certainly can work with a committee that's fourteen. Um, so if you if you choose to do two school committee members, a central administrator, a principal, a student, um, a select board member, um, a teacher from each building, a parent from each building, and then you can choose whether or not you want to have an um, effectively a community member at large. Um, you know, you're 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 within the realm of a workability there still. I wouldn't want to get get outside of that.
Through the chair.
Odd number. I'm sorry, Nick. Um, wouldn't you want an odd number just to?
Yeah.
Um, in theory, although I will say that I also have never, I've in seven years of doing this, I've never experienced a close vote on a search committee. So I absolutely in sort of the democratic fashion appreciate the point. Um, but if if push comes to shove, I we can probably make an even number work.
Through the chair, does it is it typical only have one principal and then three staff? When the principals are going to be ultimately the direct report to the superintendent, I mean, would it makes more sense to have more representation from the print from, you know, the principal side? And less from, you know, maybe the community or what's what's the normal balance that you see to work?
Um, usually, usually it's a single principal, and usually my recommendation on both central administration and principals is that the that group of staff work together to decide who it is that's actually going to be the person in the seat. Um, both for scheduling reasons, quite frankly, because it is a major time commitment. But also so that that group can say, this is actually the, this is the voice that we want representing us at the table. But I can't offhand think of any experience I've had where I've had multiple principles. Um, and generally, the perspectives coming from the staff are are different enough in terms of the elementary versus the secondary. Um, and then, you know, the conversation you want to question you may want to ask yourself is whether or not you want to have particular kinds of representation in terms of um, the people who work with special education or people who work with English learners, or if if that, if you feel that that is a something that needs to be represented on the search committee, and you may not, that's, you know, it's part of the experience of, I think, most educators now, anyway.
Um, through through the chair, I just I just kind of want to jump on Nick's point, right, about um, having a single administrator, building administrator, uh, principal on on the committee. I I feel like since the bulk of our building administrators are fairly new, I would I would look to have um, more than one on there. It doesn't have to be a principal, right? Um, we would love the principals. We only have three, so scheduling wise, that might be tough, but maybe it's a dean, maybe it's an assistant principal, but um, I just feel like with you know, with the trajectory of of them just having, you know, they haven't been there that long, so that that's where I guess I I'm going with kind of trying to have, um, you know, my, that's my suggestion. Um, it's just having more than one building principal or building administrator, sorry.
And just to interject, um, a couple of things I'll just add in there just as food for thought while we um, kick this around a little bit. Um, yeah, I I definitely view building administrators as us having nine building administrators with the principal, assistant principal, and dean within each building. Um, and really, I think if someone has value to add and wants to have input, um, they ought to apply, and I would say we open it up to that. Um, and certainly, yeah, they do interact probably more closely with the superintendent than teachers. But if you think about our workforce, the largest portion of our workforce is teachers. Um, and therefore, I think, you know, ensuring that they're they have adequate voice in this process would be really important from that perspective. Tracy, I don't know your thoughts about that.
No, I do, and I mean, I I think you can, you know, consider rebalances in terms of, you know, do you have two parents and one is elementary and one is secondary? Do you have um, two teachers that are staff member? Um, but I do think that that's um, I I think that be both because both because, you know, teaching is the focus of what happens. Um, I think that that those voices are important. Um, and I also think that from, this is, and I don't need to tell you all this, you all know this, but um, in addition to it being, um, you know, one of the, as you said, one of the core responsibilities of the school committee, I also do think that how the school committee chooses to do things like um, construct the search committee is also almost part of the messaging that you're continually sending to your district in terms of what your priorities are. Um, so I mean, for example, I appreciate Shil's point, both in terms of the the newness of some of your administrators. Um, but I do think that this is one of the places where the teachers look at the list and say, okay, so how how where do we rank in terms of that? Um, and, you know, not in any, in any sort of tit for tat or bad tempered way, but just in terms of the um, is that voice adequately represented?
Yeah. Okay.
Can I make a point, um, Chair?
Please.
Um, in a meeting with the central office administrators, there was a desire to potentially have two central office if possible on there. And I know I think you were discussing only having one. I believe on our last search committee, we did have two. Is that correct, Lori?
That's correct. I recall that.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just looking at our last search very quickly, uh, without naming names. It looks like we had three community members, two of which were parents, one of which was me, um, one student rep. Um, sorry, I'm just reading this again here. Um, I I I'm not sure about one of these folks if they were central office at the time or not, um, but we had probably one or two central office folks. Um, and three teachers, but they, I think that the high school was overrepresented in comparison to the other schools. Um, and we had a total of one, two, three, twelve. I think we had two central, central admin.
Did you have two um, students?
One, I think, right? Yeah, one.
Okay.
Am I wrong?
I don't know. I was looking back in the minutes. I I didn't bring that binder with me. And I saw two names.
Yeah, I'll forward you what I have here, so you can see it, Lori. So, yeah, we had two central office administrators.
Do you recall how many building administrators there were?
Um, good point. Let me look at this list again here. I just forwarded that, um. None. None.
Yeah, so I mean, that would be really probably then the rebalancing of making sure that you've got the building based administrators as well as the central administrators represented.
So if we had three parent slash community members, do we need to separate that out? I mean, I would assume that parents are members of the community and maybe.
It's, I mean, it's up to you. Um, there there is a, um, I I think that that there is a value to having designated parent seats. Um, I think that you can decide that you want to perhaps have an elementary parent, a secondary parent, or however you'd want to do it. Um, it's up to the committee to um, decide if you think that you need to have a voice at the table that perhaps doesn't have any direct involvement in the district. Um, that there are, you know, there are, I've I've worked with with search committees that that are are each. I've had ones where um, the school committee really felt like they needed to kind of do that outreach to the 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 district, uh, to the rest of the community. Um, and I've worked with school committees that have said, you know, we really want people who all have some degree of vested interest in the district at this time. Um, so either of those is valid. Um, I would say that what you might want to do in sort of that ongoing interest of balancing is if you want to have a sort of community member at large, that maybe you have two parents and a community member at large. Um, and and, you know, and balance things a little bit more that way.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Just to just to throw this out there, let's let's just say we decide a board of thirteen, just so we can look at balancing purposes here. With two school committee members, one select board member, one student rep, two parents, two building administrators from the nine that we just discussed, one central office, three staff members, if we can get one from each, that would ultimately be the teachers or um, other staff members, and then one individual from the community at large, so that would be thirteen. I did my math right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You lost me there. Um, because you.
Two school committee members.
Yeah, no, you were you were counting differently than I was. I'm sorry. So you're saying you were talking about two.
Uh-oh. We can continue this discussion and and Tracy will return. Um, Nick, I think I have similar to what you have. One point that I'd like to make is um, making sure that we have a balance of, so if we have three people who are either um, teachers or non-teaching staff, hi Linda.
Do we want to? Sorry.
No, that's okay. I just want to make sure now that she's here that she can hear us. Okay, great. Linda, just to quickly bring you up to speed, um, and I know that this is a weird day and time to have our meeting. Uh, we're we're discussing the composition of the superintendent search committee specifically right now. We're we're trying to create a search committee that will be a balanced representation of our district, our workforce, and the community at large without making it so big that it's difficult for scheduling and 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 getting a decision made um, and preserving the opportunity for people to have their voice. So Nick was about to propose um, a a composition, basically, we're hovering around like thirteen to fifteen members, which sounds huge until you hear how we're breaking it down. So, Mr. Adamopolis, please go ahead.
So if we did two school committee members, which I think we're all in agreement with at this point, one select board member, one student representative, two seats for parents in the community, um, two from the building administration, um, going back to most point, two from the central office, three staff members, and then one member from the community, we get us fourteen. If we believe that we need, I would say if we wanted to go to fifteen, which I would say would be the cap, if we want to get that big, maybe an additional staff member so that we can incorporate teachers and other staff from the the all three schools.
That gives you four administrators. I don't think that I've ever worked with a search committee that has four administrators.
Define administrator, central admin and building.
Central and work, yeah. So I think that, um, and again, this is, this is, this is absolutely, no, we personally have excellent administrators. Um, I think I just think that if you look at this list as a teacher or a staff member, you're going to be worried in terms of the dominance of the voice.
Okay, we want to hear that now so that we get this right. Okay. So you think, I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Millitt?
Um, I have a question. I think we should have a representative from the the union board, whether it be the president or vice president so forth, because they deal with the superintendent and issues for all teachers um, on a regular basis.
Yeah, I agree. Now, that would be they're a teacher, though, right? If they're if they're a union president? Or or that could be a teacher?
Um, not, it should be somebody from their board of governors, I would think, that is either a rep or the union president, somebody that um, on a routine basis meets with the superintendent.
I've never heard of that before. Tracy, is that something that's typical? Oh, okay.
I mean, I, is it typical? Um, is it done? Yes, it's done. Um, it it's it again is a question of whether the school committee wants to have a designated thing. I mean, I think what you might consider is to your point, usually the union union leadership um, is teaching. Um, so if you're, as I think if I was following what Nick was saying appropriately, if you're having three teachers, you could say, and one of them, and we invite one of them to be union leadership. I think that that's um, that that's a fair thing to do.
So that would be somebody that's on our staff, that's a member of the union leadership.
Does that capture what you're saying, Ms. Millitt? I just want to make sure that, yeah, okay.
Yes, because they would be a member of the staff. Yes, because they would be a member of the staff.
Mm-hmm.
But they're in a different position where they meet regularly with the superintendent.
Sure, Siddiqui, I have a question for you.
Yes, Ms. Marazza.
When you're saying three staff. Are you umbrellaing the entire staff, meaning pairs, ABAs, janitors? Cafeteria staff, or is that three teaching staff?
Well, that's a great question.
Yep, and that, and that's actually something for the committee to sort out. So I think that. Um, I think you can say, I mean, again, this gets into sort of that numbers that you were talking about, right? Um, I think you can, I think you can have a seat, y- you can, you could do three teachers. Saying that you want one of them to be union, uh, union leadership. And then add a seat, I mean, generally, I think that if you want to. If you want to invite that, that voice to the table that's non-teaching, but in, but on staff. It's good to have a seat designated that you're saying. This is going to be a member of the staff who is actually not a teacher and who doesn't obviously fill any of the other seats as well.
So, I mean theoretically, if we had a teacher from every building, and I'm also thinking about balance. If we had a teacher from every building, that would be three, and then we added a, um, a non-teacher staff.
And I mean, obviously, if you, if you say we want a teacher from every building and. One of them is union leadership, then you've already sort of said, okay, so that's that building, you know, let's make sure the other two, yep.
Correct. Yep, yeah, that makes sense. Um, I don't, again, I don't want to make this, this committee so large that we're not able to. Um, or, or that it creates challenges for us to work effectively. I know that we will be able to. Um, but I do want to make sure that, you know, we have good representation. And again, the teachers and the staff. Make up the majority of our workforce. They should, they should have good representation on this committee for sure. Um. So, where does that leave us? I've been taking notes and, and revising my notes. Um, and this is good. This is, you know, what we're here for. And this is a critical, um. Thing that we're deciding here. Um, so where does that leave us?
So I would say that if you have, it, it really is a question of where, where you end up with the administrators and the building administrators. If you have one each of those, you end up at thirteen. If you have two each of those, you end up at fifteen. Um, if you do one of the offsets of the other, you end up at fourteen. And that, just to go through my list, is two school committee members. I- if you do thirteen, then one adminis- one central administrator, one building administrator, one student, one select board member. Two parents, three teachers, of which one is a union leadership, one member of the community and one staff member.
Mm-hmm. Is there further discussion about this? I think the question in our hands at the moment is the number of central admin and the number of building admin. Um, folks that should be represented on this search committee.
Uh, through the chair.
Ms. Millitt?
Tracy, did you mention? Um, Nick, I think had mentioned of someone, a select person?
Yep, that's on here. Yep. Yep. Um, and I just will say that, you know, that, that's another one where. Whenever you reaching out to the select board and saying, we need one of your members to do X, Y, and Z, here are the dates that they need to be able to, to come, is. Is probably the typical process there.
Okay, through the chair, let's see if I can make these numbers work. Um. So we have two school committee members, one board of selection member, one student rep. Three teachers, one would be from the union, one non-union.
Non-teaching.
Non-teaching, sorry, I apologize.
Okay, yeah.
Two from central office. One from billing administration, so that gets us two, three, four, seven, eight, ten, eleven. And then, um, I would say. One parent and one community member or two parents to keep it at thirteen. I think fifteen is just too many.
Yeah, I think fifteen's a lot.
Um, but if we believe that fourteen, uh, uh, and there's really not a big difference there, you know, I think two parents and one community member would make sense. I guess it's the fourteen members. But if you want to go odd, which I, you know, I always think odds, just to make it break any ties, I think one parent and one community member.
So you had two central administrators and one parent. Is just realize what you're saying.
Two central administrators, one building administrator, one parent, one community.
Yeah, um. I, I think that, I think that that is going to appear unbalanced, to be given. Twice as much voice to the central administration as you do to parents.
Okay.
If that's true, then I would, I would go one building administrator, one central admin and three parents.
And, okay, and have a parent instead of a community member on the last one, just.
Two parents, well, yeah, or two parents and one community member, and that way. You'd balance out the two parents and the two from, one from central admin, one from business admin.
Yep.
You'd have. Three teachers and one non-teaching staff, um. One student rep representing the students, then you'd have. Three elected individuals between the school committee and the board of select.
No, that looks workable.
Write that down.
Yep, and, and you get your thirteen too. Um, and so just then to, to talk a little bit of process, I, 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 you obviously can go back to this again, but just to give you an idea of how then that would work. It would be up to the school committee to decide who among them was, um, was going to be on the search committee. Um, among the central administration likewise, who would be on it, um, among the principals, the same. Generally, for students, we ask for recommend- recommendation from. Whatever your student leadership process is, unless you have a student representative on your school committee who's active. Um, and would be able to serve, um, that is up to you. Um, select board designating themselves, um, and then you've already done some, um. I- i- inviting the union to submit whoever it is that they're going to have. Um, you've already done some great work in terms of the, um, preparation for outreach to the community, um, and to parents. Um, and then effectively, it would just then be a question as to how. Those seats get so, those individuals get selected, once those applications come in. But, that's a, that's taking that sort of next step forward.
So, okay, just to recap what, what was said here, um, what Tracy's referencing is. Um, w- we started putting together a communication to teachers with the knowledge that. Regardless of how many seats we wind up with at the end of this meeting, we're going to need teacher and administrator involvement. So Lori started drafting emails, letting people know because the, the holiday break is upon us. Um, and we are on a time crunch. Come, uh, the return on, on January third, we're hoping to, on our January tenth meeting. Be able to select members of that search committee, which doesn't really allow for a lot of. Um, introspection and calendar review and that type of thing if we wait until after break. So Lori, is it correct that you put out a communication? Already?
No, I have it in my draft, waiting to be sent at the end of this meeting.
Okay.
Um, and it was taking the verbiage that went in the. Uh, in the newspaper adverti- advertisement, the exact same thing. That you had scripted and given to Ms. Prangeli to put in the newspapers. I copied that and I have two emails in draft, one going out to. Webster Public School staff and the other one going out to all of our families.
Perfect. So those will be going out and we have a, a newspaper article that's ready to go as well. So as soon as we're, we're ready, um. We can start the process of advertising to get these seats filled. Um, and then once we, it, the, um. What we're, we're thinking is to have people submit a letter of interest to Lori. Um, but that's certainly also up for discussion. Um, my thought in just sort of trying to plan this out was, and again, please. Open for discussion, um, letters of interest to Lori no later than noon on January tenth. We'll be meeting that evening. So anything later than noon, Lori's going to have to scan them, get them into the packet and we'll need to be, have time to review them before our meeting. At six that evening. So I felt like. I don't know. I'm trying to walk the tight rope of giving people plenty of time and then giving us enough time to be able to turn it around. So. Comments or feedback from the committee about that?
Through the chair, just, just to clarify, the only votes that we make on the tent would be for two selectmen, I mean, five, two school committee members and then the. Parents community, right? Everything else would be, the teachers would be giving them, us their own names, the board of selectmen would be giving us their own name. Central office and building administrator would be giving us their own name. Is that accurate?
I'm not so sure about the teachers. Tracy, can you speak to that?
Right, so it, it, from the, the other seats here that are sort of not self-selected would be the two parents. The two non-union leadership teachers, the community member and the staff member. Um, that would be what you would be collecting applications for. Um. Now, let me, let me also offer this, and again, this is up to you to decide what to do. Um, sometimes committees would prefer not to be voting individual names up and down in their, in their, in their committee, um. This is absolutely under your purview. You absolutely can do this however you want to. You can absolutely do that. Um. The other thing that sometimes committees will do is have all of the applications come in, have me put them into piles. And have me then try to balance the rest of the committee. Um, and that is also something that you can choose to do. Either of those processes is valid. It is up to you to decide how you want to do it.
It, it may also be helpful, uh, you know, if we are going to discuss, um, the composition of the search committee. In an open meeting that, um. It, this is sort of a balance of the two, I guess, that instead of using the names of the people who've applied, we just, you know, Lori, you put. A, B, C for community member and A, B, C whatever for teacher. And then when we, when we discuss that in open meeting, it doesn't feel like we're talking about individual people. We're more so talking about the content, um, of the letter or, you know, what, what it is that they. Present as, as far as a perspective. It's another way to go.
You might want to check with legal counsel, um, because secret ballots aren't allowed in, um, public bodies. And I wonder if not designating names would be considered a secret ballot. And that's me thinking, I, I, that, that's not me saying that, that that's actually the case. That's me trying to make sure that whatever we do, we don't get you into trouble. Um.
So I would. Secret, is secret ballot more so school committee members not owning their own vote, as opposed to school committee members not naming? People publicly that have applied to be on the committee?
Right, but are you not owning your vote if you're not actually designated who you're voting for? And I, and I don't know. That's, that, that's me trying to anticipate trouble, which is my.
Sure, yeah, that's your job.
That's not saying that necessarily would be the case. That, that's me, that's me looking for trouble and trying to get you, trying to steer clear of any possible trouble.
Okay, alright. So maybe we don't do APC. Sorry, Ms. Adamopoulos.
Why would it be, why would it be a secret vote if, if we've designated the resumes with a clear designation? If someone wants to get that information later on, it is very easily accessible. Uh, because our votes be ultimately publicized, we would say, you know. Three votes for A and two votes for B and. That information would be public record. Um, if a third party then came and wanted to get the meeting notes, they could see at that point. Who those resumes are attached.
But you should just, and, and again, I don't know that this is the case. I don't know how the attorney general would decide on this. I don't want to get you to the place where the attorney general has to decide on this. Um, if you ask me in my professional capacity, if. If you should be voting without designating who you're voting for, I would tell you that you shouldn't.
Okay.
Um, that, that, that that would be potentially dangerous. Again, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not like, that's why I started by saying, before you do that, talk to your legal counsel. Um, just that I, I think that you're, you're steering yourself into, to a situation where you could get into trouble there.
Through the chair, I will say that my, my personal preference would be that we as a committee. Are the ones who ultimately are going to. Decide who's on that, on the search committee. Um, I, I think that. It's our responsibility to make sure that we're putting the people on that, they're best going to represent the staff, the buildings and the community at large.
I agree with you, Ms. Adamopoulos.
But I think you're in good shape. Um, so just realize I won't be, uh, uh, Kelly already knows this, I won't be able to be with you on the tenth. I have a, a conflict that evening. Um, but as long as everyone who is, um, putting their name forward is clear on the dates. Um, then, but once I have them, then I can send out the, the communication that would then go to the search committee in terms of the. You know, the confidentiality agreement and the scheduling and making sure that. Um, we have clear communication so that when the applications are coming in, they have them from me and so forth.
Through the chair, we just make sure that we're reaching out to the select board as soon as possible, because they're going to have to do their. Vote most likely at a public meeting. And I don't know when their next meeting is. I'm assuming we just need to have their member designated prior to January eighteenth, correct?
Um, you should have, I mean, I, the, I'm not sure they necessarily would need to designate in public session, um, to be.
They, they'd be, they would ultimately, if they're going to choose somebody, they can't do in violation of open meeting law.
It's not, this isn't under their purview. They're not making a decision on something that's actually a, that there's no, they have no power here. Um.
If they're going to designate a member from their board, they would have to. Meet, discuss that and figure that out. That would be an open meeting law violation.
I don't think it would, because it's not actually something that's under their purview. They're not, you only can commit an open meeting law violation if you're actually making a decision on something that's under your purview. In any case, the.
I recommend that we tell the selectmen as soon as possible to designate a member, and if they feel like they need to hold a meeting, that they have enough time to do so.
Fair.
Um, through the chair, to answer your question, member Adamopoulos, um. We're back in the office on the twenty-eighth and that was on my. To-do list for that day is to reach out to Courtney in the office and have her reach out to the board.
Thank you very much.
Um, through the chair. So, when should we as a school committee? Um, as nominate and assign and determine which school committee members will be on the search committee? Is that something we do now tonight? Or is that something we do at a later date?
It's honestly up to you. Um, I think probably the first thing you want to do though is give everybody a chance to check their calendars and make sure that they could make. That they could actually hit all the meetings. Um, so it sounded as if, um, possibly that would be part of the conversation that you were looking to have on the tenth.
Okay. Okay. So it sounds like on the tenth, it sounds like we haven't voted yet, and I know that we need to get to that. However. Um, if I can just recap what, what's gone on so far. We're, we're about at a consensus with regard to the composition of our search committee, which we'll get back to so that we can vote. And then beyond that, our, our charge on January tenth will be to nominate two school committee members. Uh, to serve on the search committee and to review all of the applicants, um. For, I'm typing this as I talk here, review. From the teachers. Community. And parents. Did I miss anything about who we're voting for?
Staff.
Uh, staff. Is that accurate?
That would be what I have as well, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, will we need a vote to approve other members? So for example, the, um. The union representative that's a teacher, do we need, does the school committee vote for that person to be a part of the committee or is it?
So if you, uh, so what I would say is that if you are designating individuals that evening, what you also should do is be acceptably. Um, essentially voting to accept the designations that others have made, is I think the way that I would phrase it.
Okay.
But yes, that would be a good thing to do. And then, I mean, honestly, part of what you're doing then at your committee meeting is publicizing who the search committee is.
Yep. Okay. Is there anything else that we need to be mindful of? And I know I'm getting ahead of us because we haven't voted yet, but up for the tenth?
Um. I don't think so. There isn't anything else that, that comes to my mind.
Okay. Um, so backing up here, I'm not sure if I'm, if my notes are fully up to date here, two, four, five, six. I can give it a shot. I have some notes here with regard to the. I can give it a shot. I have some notes here with regard to the composition of this, uh, search committee. If someone else is feeling real confident about their notes, I invite you to share them. Otherwise, I will share mine.
You want me to read mine?
If, if you think that you've got, you got it down, Tracy, that would be great.
I think I've got where you ended up with, which was your lucky thirteen. Um, so you have two school committee members, a single member of central administration to be designated by the, by that group, a single building administrator to be designated by that group, a student rep, um, to be brought forward, um, either, but, but through student leadership, a member of the select board to be selected by the select board, two parents, a teacher who is a member of union leadership to be designated by them, two teachers, a community member, and a staff member, and with all of the, the non-designated to be selected by the school committee in your meeting on the tenth. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, is there any discussion about that? Okay. Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the composition of the superintendent search committee to include thirteen members, which will be as follows: two school committee members, one central office administrator, one building administrator, one student representative, one member of the select board, two parents, one teacher who's a union leader, two other teachers, one community member, and one non-teaching staff member, with the, um, designation and voting as outlined by Tracy already. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That was a very helpful discussion.
Um, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I will entertain a meeting, uh, excuse me, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yeah.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes, meeting adjourned. Tracy, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And if anyone, if anyone has questions over the holiday, by all means.